Hi there, I'm Mike Jones. It's school board election time again. It's pretty exciting, right? Yeah, maybe not, but it is important and we kind of know what happens when we ignore these types of things, don't we? I recently sat down with someone who understands the business of education intimately. Here's Joe Schmidt.
My name is Joe Schmidt. I was born in a little bitty town of 150 people in Northern California and I went to a two-room elementary school. So I'm a product of public education and I tell folks that I come from a long line of educators. My mother was the janitor of that school, so she was the best educator in the school. But I worked in lumber mills, I was a cowboy and all of that sort of thing and I ended up going in the military and that's when I had an epiphany and I wanted to become an educator. So I came out of the military in 1974, went to Cal State University Chico, got a degree in history and physical education and then went on to Brigham Young University and did my master's and doctorate work at Brigham Young University in the sciences. When I was at BYU, I was looking to be a college professor, but I was recruited by an independent school in Tennessee. So I spent 10 years in Tennessee as an athletic director and a teacher of history. And then 10 years later, I was recruited as a high school principal in South Carolina, so I spent five years as a high school principal in South Carolina. And then at the end of that five-year tenure, I was recruited by a school in Hawaii, so I went to Maui for 20 years where I served as the headmaster of a college prep school.
Good for you.
So I spent 40 years in education, basically, and taught pretty much every subject you could teach, ran big wonderful schools. They were independent schools, they weren't public schools, but I'm a big supporter of public and independent education. I think they both have their place and actually should be working together more readily at this point in time.
So you're retired now?
I am, I retired seven years ago.
And so what makes you now think that they need you again?
Well, two things. One, I still consult, I do consulting work. I'm actually going to be in Hawaii this summer doing some consulting.
And this is for private schools?
Well, independent schools.
Independent, yeah, what is the difference?
The difference between independent and private schools is independent schools, they don't exclude anybody. If the person fits the mission of the school regardless of who they are.
Academics.
Academically. And independent schools will provide as much financial aid as they possibly can to ensure the child can go to that school. But we also, we also seek lots of grants. I receive, we get lots of gifts, we also charge tuition, but we discount tuition for people that need it.
Lesser affordability, yes.
Yeah, so that's the way, that's the way they operate. And they receive no assistance from government whatsoever. It's all done through fundraising, tuition, they're income-based. So the key to an independent school's success is to create a wonderful endowment so that you can draw off the endowment to maintain stability.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And so here you are in Josephine County and you see the state of public education now and certain issues that are happening inside of it. Is that what is provoking your interest in running for the school board or?
Yeah, being in consulting and being involved in schools still, the passion and the burn is still there for young people to make sure that they're provided with the needs, with the education that they're going to need to keep this country moving forward and their personal lives. In terms of right now, it actually comes from 40 years of experience. I've seen education change over the last 40 years. Even though I was in independent schools, I served on accreditation teams for public schools, many, many accreditation teams. I did a lot of consulting with public schools and I had relationships with public schools as well. And I've watched education change dramatically. Just a quick example, I'll give you two quick examples. In the 1970s, American education was number one in the nation in terms of skills and abilities.
Are you referring to Oregon, you said American education?
I'm talking American first.
Okay.
American education.
In the world.
In the world. American education now in the world is around 27, okay? That's happened over the last 30 years. In Oregon right now, it's 48th out of 50 states.
That's shameful.
A state like Oregon should never have that low a ranking. When I was in the southeast, it was Mississippi, Alabama, those were the ones that were down there. And to think that these schools in much poorer districts, much poorer states have a better education success than Oregon is really a travesty.
This brings the point that perhaps funding and the outcome from education are not inextricably linked.
I would agree with that to a point.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean certainly you have to have money to do things, but for instance, you said that you were, Ray, you went to school in a very small school, it probably had one room in which many grades were being taught at the same time.
That's correct.
And yet, the quality of that education was probably superior to what is being produced now for a great deal more money.
I would totally agree with that. It's not the money, it's how the money is spent and how it's planned for from a future standpoint. Teachers have traditionally been underpaid. I believe teachers deserve significant increases in salaries, okay? But money is thrown away in so many different ways and state money in many, many ways. A most recent issue that I know the Grants Pass District 7 is dealing with is deferred maintenance on the buildings and that sort of thing. I asked somebody, I won't mention the name, but I asked somebody in a position of authority and I said, "Do you have a PRISM fund or a deferred maintenance fund in your budget so that you have money budgeted over the next 30 to 100 years to continue maintenance?" And you use that money by investing it and you draw off the investment, basically an endowment. And they said, "If we tried to do that, the unions would get involved because the money should go someplace else." They would want to tap into that. So what's happening is, is they're looking at a $10 million bond. That $10 million bond is going to probably run over 20 to 30 years, which is means it's going to cost the district 20 to 25 million dollars for that $10 million bond, okay? And the taxpayers are going to have to pay for it. If instead, the state would budget you 400 to 500,000 dollars a year for deferred maintenance and you infested that money, the investment of that money would draw 7% to 8% interest and the amount would grow and you wouldn't spend it all.
And would probably pay the bills without touching the principal.
Without touching the principal, that's exactly right. And a perfect example, in my last school, I had a $37 million endowment, okay? That endowment continued to grow year in and year out. I drew a certain amount off of it every year, but I would not draw any more than 4% of the earnings, or 4%. It earned 7%, I draw 4% off for operations. It grew at 3% a year, year after year.
So you've got a pretty solid understanding of the financial aspect of this.
Yeah, in my role as headmaster and as principal, most recently in my role of headmaster for 20 years on Maui, I was completely in charge of the budget. It was a $25 million annual budget and I had to run the whole thing. I had a business manager and I had a finance committee on my board of trustees that gave me guidance and assistance. But yeah, I spent a lot of time dealing with big money.
So as someone who's looking in at this from the outside, I see the issue as just a lack of will to push academic excellence and too much concentration on policy and teaching children outside of the skillset that they need to be productive adults.
I think what you see happening over the last 25 to 30 years is the effort, the energy and the finances have been siphoned off and they go to the assistance of those who are struggling, okay? So it tends to be the lower end. The student is struggling in the classroom, the student is struggling emotionally, the student is struggling socially, the student is struggling with the family. And that's a good thing, that money goes to those folks. It's public education, they should be served. But what happens is, is the middle group, the middle class gets, becomes anonymous in the process, especially in larger schools. As they become anonymous, the high-end kid, for the most part, is going to achieve regardless. The low-end kid is going to get all the attention. The middle kid, which is the largest group, is going to be the one that receives the less attention.
Are we talking about economics here?
I think it could be partially that.
Okay.
But it's also society. It's how society's norms have changed so dramatically and they've redefined what a needy child is in many cases.
I see. So perhaps the criteria is more academic than economic?
Yeah, it's also numbers, it's also numbers. Over the course of the last 30 years, I refer to as the conglomerate school. The large school has evolved, where it's the large community school. The small community school, you knew every kid, every kid by name, you knew their parents, they took pride in the school, the kids took pride in the school, everybody felt like somebody in the small neighborhood school. As it became the conglomerate school, the large school, the 4,000, 5,000 student school, parents now, first of all, kids, not every kid gets to be on the football team now, not every kid gets to play in the band, not every kid gets to be in a leadership position, whatever it may be. So they tend to become anonymous, they tend to lose interest in school. Their loss of interest in school could potentially get them defined as somebody who has learning troubles or learning disabilities. They may be defined as a troublemaker because they start acting out because they feel, you know, like they're not paid attention to. It's the same with parents. In the community school, parents got involved. They loved to be part of the community, they would do the fundraising, they would do the special events, they would get information from the teachers, they would collaborate with the teachers on behavior and all this.
And perhaps in a larger system, those parents feel like somebody else is already doing that?
That could be one part of it. The other part of it, they don't get the information. They don't know what's happening in the school. They sense because their child's anonymous, that they're anonymous, what's the point? Just let the child go to school, eventually they'll graduate and be on their own.
So what's the, what's the way of addressing that issue?
Well, there's two or three things that I think are important. I think number one, you need smaller teacher-student ratio. You need smaller classrooms. Classrooms with 30 students, 35 students, it's very difficult to engage every student, especially when you have one or two or three in there that are taking all the attention, okay? So I think student-teacher ratio is really important. I've also seen schools that have created the community within the community schools, where they create school pods within the school. And energy is given to this group and they become kind of like little community schools within the big school. And that way, nobody is feeling that they're left out. A third thing, which is certainly controversial in this day and age, is I believe in school choice. I think that a lot of people feel that school choice is the destruction of public education. I don't necessarily think so, I think it will raise the standard of public education.
Well, it could be if they refuse to do what humans have done throughout history, and that is adapt, you know? If the circumstances become different where you're now competing with somebody, I think competition is a very healthy thing. It brings out the best in people if you, if you know that there's somebody right here that's about to beat you at something, it drives you a little bit to move forward. And I think that, I think it would do nothing but benefit public schools. However, there's no denying from my point of view, and you may disagree, that there is a culture within public education that they don't want the competition because they want to continue to do what they're doing and their objectives may be different than what a parent thinks the objectives should be in order to educate their child.
Okay, two things. One is, one of the big drivers in terms of public education is funding. There's a certain amount of money allocated for each child that's in the school. If that child leaves the school, those children leave the school, less money is allocated to the school, okay? Well, the reality is, if you have less children, it should take less money to run the school.
Sure, absolutely.
The other side of it is this, if you allow for school choice, there's all kinds of school options that develop and the public sector doesn't necessarily have to adapt to all those different options. For example, independent schools that deal with autistic children or deal with children with learning disabilities. Those things exist all over this country. 10% of the country has independent schools, or are independent schools. Or you take a look at KIPP schools in New York, started by Wendy Kopp. These schools take kids who don't have much money, but they have the desire and the drive to be able to achieve academically and they will take them. You take the Harlem Project, Jeffrey Canada's project in New York City. He created, because of the failure of the New York City public schools, he created the Harlem Project, which took inner-city kids who were from dysfunctional families and he gave them a sense of home. You've got the college prep schools, you've got the magnet schools that are schools for the arts and sciences. You have the charter schools that may just deal with industrial arts or that sort of thing, computer technology, high-tech, STEM, whatever the case may be. So those schools would take up the slack and if a parent wants to send their child to a certain kind of school, the money would go with them. Now, I do not want public education to ever end in this country, that's not what I'm talking about at all. I think all education could be public education. The money follows the child where the child goes. That's public education.
Yes, but there is an infrastructure that would disagree with you on that point because there are, there are unions, there is superfluous, shall we say, administration. There are, you know, there are policy objectives that require employees and funding that they would frankly scream like stuck pigs if you.
Absolutely.
If you wanted to skewer them on their funding and make their situation smaller.
Yeah.
As a general rule, bureaucracies almost live for one thing and that is to become larger.
Yeah.
You know? So the public education as you envision it would necessarily make them a smaller entity and so there, I understand the objection to that on their part. I don't agree with their objection, but I understand it.
Absolutely, and I do too.
So, and so in this county, what can be done? How much power does a school board member have to change policy or curricula?
Yeah, you know, being, being new to running for the school board in this community, I can't answer that completely. I know that the primary responsibility is to ensure that policies that are laws, or excuse me, that laws that are handed down, it's the board's responsibility to create the policies to ensure the laws are followed, okay? Now, there is, there is the potential for being, to adjusting those policies in ways that fit the mores of the community, okay? If this is a, say, conservative community, you can adjust those policies so that you meet the word of the law, but you also don't, you don't necessarily offend the community too much, okay? If it goes against the mores of the community.
These things I don't think would be that great of an issue if just educating people on reading, writing, math, history, et cetera, were the scope of things.
That's exactly right.
But now we're getting into social policy, which has implications.
Sure.
You know, and, and it's not unreasonable for, for, you know, your average taxpayer who's funding all of this to be concerned about what their, what their environment is going to look like or what the culture is going to look like in 20 years, you know? I think that you're making the citizens of tomorrow today in schools. And so I think that they should be well skilled in, you know, the basics that, I've always thought, you know, once you learn how to read, you can take yourself wherever you need to go. And I think it was definitely very beneficial to come out of grammar school even with a pretty good understanding of the history of the previous 50 years, you know? I grew up in the 60s, so, you know, we all knew in great detail and watched endless films about what happened in World War II.
Sure.
And a lot of people now don't, they don't even know what decade that occurred in.
Yeah.
And so I, I would hope that we can go back to that. Do you have, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that the basics, the basics are the most important thing. And I think literacy is the most important thing. You can teach yourself math if you can read.
Right.
Okay, you can learn science if you can read, you've hit it right on the head. I think the issue we have right now is we're fighting media as well. Media operates in two and three-second soundbites. When we learned how to read, we were considering what we were reading while we were reading, we were doing critical thinking while the words were going through our heads.
That's profound.
Yeah, and what happens now is, we see a three-second soundbite, it's filed away, we haven't even thought about it.
Yeah, we're done with that news.
Well, then we regurgitated as truth before even thinking about it.
Yes, wow.
And that's, that is key, that we get kids back in books where they're contemplating what they're reading, not just absorbing.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's important. So, so you don't really know what you, what you're limited to do? What is, what is it that you hope to accomplish? I have, well, we've all been, become more aware of school boards in the last three or four years since the pandemic had a lot of parents at home and they could see the remote learning that their kids were doing. And, and then school board meetings are either broadcast live or snippets of them are posted on social media and YouTube. And, and so we, you know, become more concerned about those things. Is, is there any particular topics that, that you see need to be addressed because of what you've recently become aware of?
Well, getting back to your question about what does the board do? The board is also responsible for hiring the superintendent and it's also involved in personnel decisions, which is powerful. That plays a big part. So when, when you're involved in that, you're also involved in creating the culture because it's the people that make the culture of the school. Now, in terms of Grants Pass, I've had the opportunity to attend board meetings, I've had the opportunity to spend time with the superintendent of school. I'll be honest with you, I think they're doing a really good job, okay? But there are some areas that are of concern for me. Now, I see my role on the board as being helpful because I probably have more education experience than anybody on the board. And I can come from that perspective when it comes to influencing. If I look at one thing that's, that's hit me, first of all, this budget issue we talked about earlier is of concern to me. I think there are ways in which the budget can be controlled, where the school can ensure that it is, it is upgraded on a regular basis, that buildings don't have to be torn down and rebuilt for high amounts of money and we are responsible for budget as the board as well. Another thing I thought was interesting is the college acceptance rating of the school, especially Grants Pass High School. I had asked some folks on the administrative staff, how many students go off to college? And they said to me, about 40% that go off to college. And I'm thinking, well, you know, it's usually about 55 to 60% in most of America that go off to college, but that's not terribly bad, okay? But then it was said to me, but that includes community colleges and trade schools. And I said, "Well, how many go to four-year universities?" Well, the answer was 12%, okay? Well, if you take that 12% and you've figured out how many graduate from four-year universities, it's usually about 60%. So really only about seven of every 100 students at the school are graduating from four-year universities. And I think that's really not a good thing. I think that's very difficult because you need that educated, technical group who understand society from a humanities point of view, from a science point of view, from a literary point of view, to really add context to the entire nation.
Okay, and I'll, I'm going to push back a little bit on that in that you would probably have a greater number of people going to college if college wasn't costing 50 grand, you know, for, for a year to be there.
Yeah.
And this is another topic entirely, but I think that the US government, being in the student loan business, creates a circumstance where if you're a university, you test the limitation of that.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, somebody graduates college with a 30-year mortgage that rivals, you know, an intermediate home. And I, I think that that's problematic and there's a lot of people that are not even considering college on that basis.
Yeah, certainly the finances play in that. And it should never be that the college educated are the upper class per se, okay? It should be something that reflects the American community. And I'll share you this, I ran college prep schools, okay? That's, that was my background. The key is that the issue is not so much the student loans that come from government, it's the inability to know where to look for the money. And that comes from a robust college counseling department in a school who knows how to go out and find out where the scholarships are and moves people in that direction. My school in Hawaii, we graduated about 90 kids a year, okay? Those 90 kids were offered, year in and year out, $15 million in scholarships for 90 kids. And it's because we had one-on-one college counseling. So there is money out there and that's not discounting what you're saying. What the government has done in terms of student loans is atrocious. But what it's not, it's, it's, it's a good thing that they've tried to help people get going to college, but it's a bad thing that they've enabled colleges to raise their tuitions to ridiculous amounts.
Right.
Because they're reaping the benefits of those student loans.
And it ripples throughout society. Take for instance, doctors. It costs, in many cases, $300 plus for an appointment.
Sure.
So, and a great deal of that has to do with the expenses that they have to meet.
Yeah.
And, and there is, you know, regulatory burden and, but certainly a great deal of that is, is meeting a student loan debt every month. I think that if it were less expensive, much less expensive for them, they could offer their services at a lesser rate, which would be of greater benefit to.
Everybody.
That's not going to change probably in the, in the short term. Certainly should, but it probably won't. Okay, is there anything else that you would like to relate as a, as a qualification or, or something that makes you better than the alternatives, of which I'm guessing there are many? The Republican Party has offered quite a few candidates this year.
I think probably the most noteworthy thing I'm offering is my experience in education. I think the fact that I have worked in education for 40 years at many different positions. I've taken struggling schools and I've turned them into thriving schools. I integrated two schools, one of the white flight schools in the south I integrated, and I actually integrated the school in Hawaii. And those were significant accomplishments for me. I think we need to be looking at conservative principles when we start looking at finances. I think we need to be very careful on how we're changing the social structure within the school. And I have experiences of changing social structures. Integrating schools is a perfect example of that. But I think you have to be careful how you do it because you can create more victims because you can create more victims of other kids if you're trying to end the victimhood of a small minority of kids.
Give an example of that, if you would.
Perfect example is the is the CRT, okay? Critical Race Theory. All right, history should be taught in an accurate fashion. I would never argue that. The good, the bad and the ugly, okay? But it's the teacher's responsibility to ensure that the kids are learning it so that they can critically think about it. They ought to be hearing all different sides of it, okay? And they should learn what the good was, how America has worked so hard to overcome and where America has failed. But the victimhood comes from when you start telling kids that they are responsible now for something that occurred years before.
Or or that they still carry the burden of their own victimhood from a circumstance that didn't happen to them.
Yeah, again, that creates more victims rather than less victims.
Yeah, division between people who ordinarily, if you left them to their own devices and didn't plant the idea in them, that they would, there would be unity there.
Anytime you have division, you've got victims. You have victims on both sides. Everybody becomes a victim when you have division. And you're exactly right. When you, if if you bring people together rather than create division, you lessen the number of victims in the student body.
However, there there are people who claim that they're bringing together when in actuality, they are performing the division. And and that's that's part of the problem now. And and, you know, there's going to be some contentious conversations about this.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that they're already happening at the school board. But, you know, how do you deal with somebody who who claims, you know, that that we have to change circumstances because, you know, I've, my skin is this color and all of these people are contributing towards the lesser opportunity for me? How do you deal with that?
Well, to, for me, the issue is this. Equality and opportunity is what's important, equality. Equity of outcomes is an impossibility.
Of course.
You can be much closer in reaching the goal of equality of outcomes or equality of opportunity, that you do everything you can to give whatever child is in the school the opportunity to excel where his or her gifts gifts lie, okay? And where their passions are, you give them the equal opportunity, but if you
Without any consideration of their race, their color, their creed.
Exactly, absolutely, yeah. Equity is a whole different thing. If if outcomes, you cannot create equal outcomes. Some people are gifted language learners, some people are gifted with cognitive skills when it comes to math and science. The cognitive kid who's the introvert isn't going to be equal to the great orator. It just can't happen, they don't have the ability to do that.
That's right.
So so I think creating equality of outcome is what you really strive for. Or excuse me, equality of opportunity.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, have to be careful about that because it all sounds somewhat similar. You know, I I totally understand the 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 use of the word equity is confusing because people confuse that with equality.
Yeah.
And if you're treating everybody equally, you can't, you have no power over the outcome. If if you're standing in front of a class, you you can only convey to the student what you're trying to convey, what they take up is is out of your hands.
Yeah, there's aptitude that plays in that, there's motivation that plays in that, there's passion that plays in that. All of those things play in a child's mind when they achieve or don't achieve. It's they're not going to achieve in the areas that they're not passionate about as well as they're going to achieve in the areas they're passionate about. It just, it's the nature of all of us, whether we're adults or children. And those malleable minds at that age, we just need to make sure that we reinforce the passions for all those kids and let the chips fall where they may.
Yep.
So.
Thanks a lot, Joe.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it.